Good afternoon, everybody. If you could please hit refresh on your devices and make sure that you are logged in to the October 11th meeting at noon. So if you hit refresh at the meetings, you'll see October 11th noon meeting. Please make sure you're in that meeting. If you're having difficulty, raise your hand. We'll come around and help.
The city council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Voting is now open. Please mark yourself present for quorum purposes. Alder Person Robinson. Okay, Alder Person Robinson, present. Alder Woman Ramirez. Alderman Ramirez, present. Alder Woman Gutierrez. Alder Woman Gutierrez, not in chambers. Alderman Mosley. Alderman Mosley, not in chambers. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez, not in chambers. Alder Woman Tabarez. Alder Woman Tabarez, not in chambers. Alder Woman Cruz. Alder Woman Cruz is present. Okay, the vote is now closed.
Thank you. There are 46 members present. We do have a quorum. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend George W. Daniels, the First Baptist Congregational Church of Chicago.
Let us pause for a moment of silence, recognizing atrocities has taken place in Israel, also other national disasters in Morocco, Libya, Maui, and senseless murder in Sudan. Amen. Let us continue in prayer. Lord, we praise you for this day, for allowing us a new experience. Thank you, God, for being the given sustain of life. As we come today, we have multiple concerns about the well-being of our families, safety of our children, respect and care for our seniors, safety of all our communities, even our nation, and what's going on around us globally. Lord, I pray for resolution for the conflict of war, especially what's going on in the Middle East between Israel and Hamas. Our hearts agree for the loss of hundreds of lives and property. It is my prayer that the hostages taken may be returned safely. We lift up the 2 million people living in Gaza, Palestinians who do not endorse the violent actions of Hamas, and yet they being affected, their lives being disrupted, services are being shortened. Oh, God, help us, Lord. As we look locally, dear Lord, actual special blessings on each neighborhood that make up this city of Chicago. Dear Father, we in trouble and we need you. Father, I pray your blessings and compassion and wisdom on each council member because they make decisions that affect residents of this city, the taxes, schools, utilities, and other necessary services, along with neighborhood capital improvement, public health, and policing. Lord, we pray each day for the officers who seek to keep this city safe. We need you. It is a monumental task to make decisions that affect people's lives and the citizens of this great city. Gracious Father, I pray your special protections and guidance on Mayor Johnson as seek to make this city a safer and more inclusive city. Lord, we inundated in unprecedented wave of migrants coming to the city. Please help each neighborhood to be hospitable in receiving the immigrants. The Statue of Liberty that stands in the New York Harbor is a symbol of welcome. I pray that the city will continue to receive additional resource so we can accommodate the immigrants. If the truth be told, we all who come to America are immigrants over the past several hundred years. Gracious Father, I pray that all the same, that we must not forget the homeless, the jobless, the mentally ill, who in this city, oh, God, we pray that we seek to minister their needs. And Father, not only we look locally, but Father, we pray for our nation. Our nation is in trouble. We have chaos in the halls of Congress. We have indecision in the Supreme Court. And Lord, we pray for President Biden to seek to make decision that will continue to push this nation forward. Lord, we need you. We need you. Lord, help us to love each other, to have civility, and to pray for each other. Oh, God of heaven, as the prophet Amos said, "Let justice roll down like water in righteousness' and mighty stream." We love you, we praise you, and we thank you. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost, I pray, amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you. This is the time for public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Leonard Matansky.
Leonard is not present.
Our next speaker is Libby Matavsky.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, thank you so much. Just a few days ago, we witnessed an unprecedented terrorist attack against Israeli citizens with unconscionable savagery, brutality, and cruelty. Countless terrorists slaughtered raped, mutilated, innocent civilians of all nationalities and races, including about 17 of our fellow American citizens, dismembering dozens and dozens of babies in front of their parents, raping women and curating them as trophies. Up to 200 were taken hostage, some bound and immediately executed, others tortured and taken to captivity. Slums in Gaza were filmed rejoicing at the arrival of Israeli hostages. Hundreds of Palestinians surrounding pickup trucks laden with Israelis dead. You hear the ladies cheering and partying. And the horror continues. As we speak, missiles are raining down on Israel, and the people of Israel under merciless attack. And this was not just an attack on Israel, a Jewish issue or politically partisan issue. It was an affront to humanity that demands a response, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. It is imperative to lead and speak with clear moral clarity. Our city looks to you for leadership and unequivocal condemnation. There's no room for nuance, moralizing, justification of or moral equivalence. As President Biden so clearly said, "We're witnessing abject evil." We need you, our local elected officials representing the rich tapestry of this great city, to express your moral, decent, human leadership. We are scared. The murders in Israel, the murders in Israel leave our local Jewish community wounded and fearful for our own lives here in Chicago. The Hamas convent also the other destruction of Israel. And so the religious struggle against all Jews everywhere, families murdered, recorded themselves mercifully crying "Yehud," Arabic for Jew. Yesterday, Hamas issued a declaration of general mobilization, designating this coming Friday for all Arabs and Muslims worldwide to rise up. And Khalid Mashal, the leader and founding member of Hamas, asked all Muslims around the world to carry jihad by their souls, to fight against the Jews and be martyrs, ending his homily, saying, "Funds are important, but today we are asking you for your blood and souls for sacrifice." Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, please denounce this evil. Please leave no room for false, cynical, and dangerous justification. You support this resolution. Please support with this resolution. Go back, lead your constituencies, speak out on behalf of decency, human values, and continue your important work together, keeping us all safe and secure. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Daniel Goodwin.
Last Saturday, October 7, hundreds and even thousands of Hamas terrorists invaded Israel via land, sea, and air assaults at 6:00 in the morning, and proceeded to attack 22 Israeli towns throughout southern Israel. Hamas terrorists slaughtered, tortured, raped, and abducted men, women, boys, girls, infants, the elderly, and the infirm, including 260 young people attending an overnight concert. Many shot at point-blank range as they slept while others were kidnapped. In addition to fleeing back into Gaza with approximately 150 hostages, Hamas terrorists murdered over 1,200 and left 3,000 injured. Amongst the dead were 40 Jewish infants butchered in Kfar Azza, a village formerly of 750 people. There is no nuance here. The Hamas terrorists did not invade Israel because they were seeking a different path to peace. The Hamas terrorists had one goal and one plan: murder and terrorize Jews. And it should be very clear: every Jew who was murdered, maimed, raped, abused, and kidnapped this past weekend was within Israel's pre-1967 borders, the borders the United Nations established in 1948 for the Jewish state of Israel. Just 37 days ago, I was in Nativa Asarah, an idyllic Israeli farming village of 900 people sitting right on the border with Gaza. While we were in Nativa Asarah, we placed colorful tiles on a giant mosaic called "The Path to Peace." This mosaic decorated one of the village's anti-sniper barriers. Last Saturday, Hamas terrorists overran and destroyed Nativa Asarah, murdering 15 residents. I implore you to pass this simple resolution that is not about politics or policy. This resolution asks you to merely condemn violence, demand the return of hostages, and support Israel's right to defend its own people. But don't do this because I ask. Do it at least for the 15 victims of Nativa Asarah, who I will now name, who will never know a path to peace. Brothers Amit and Yagal Wax, Orin Stern, Flomy and his wife Ayelit Malcho, Hevet Segal, Gil Taesh, Adi Baharev, Paul Karen, Ruth and Arya Akuni and their daughter Orr, Narice Berger, Marina Almagor, Danny Vobek. May their memories be a blessing to all who knew and loved them, and may their radiant lives, snuffed out too early, serve to inspire you all to condemn the violence and inhumanity that Hamas terrorists unleashed upon Israelis in Nativa Asarah and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Yanam Cohen. Please, please remember that speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Thank you. Yanam Cohen.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Again, I would like to begin with a few. That's me.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, last Saturday and during the sacred Jewish holiday of Simchat Torah, Hamas terrorists launched an unprovoked and unprecedented slaughter against innocent Israelis, resulting in the murder of 1,200 men, women, and children. The terrorists stormed over 20 Israeli communities, going from one house to another, killing innocent civilians. Babies beheaded, children burned alive, women raped and dragged through the streets, parents slaughtered in front of their children, over 100 people taken as hostages, including children, women, and the elderly, among them 14 Americans, including members of the greater Chicagoland community. This is not a single, there is no single Israeli family who has not been impacted by these atrocities. This is a battle between force of civilization and force of barbarism. Civilization must prevail. The coming days will be challenging, and a global support will be essential for us to prevail. President Biden and Governor Pritzker gave powerful remarks yesterday, and we are grateful for the robust bipartisan support in the Midwest and around the United States, the states standing in solidarity with the state of Israel. We are grateful for that and for that support and the support of the U.S. political leaders on both sides of the aisle. America is Israel's greatest ally in the world, and the city of Chicago has a major and a big role in that alliance. God bless Israel and God bless the United States of America.
Thank you very much for your comments. Please remember, all speakers must sign up with the sergeant in arms, and speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Our next speaker is Janine Shahadi.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone, for the second time. Can everybody hear me? My mic is on. Okay. I would like to begin with some responses from the people of Gaza when asked to describe the situation in Gaza right now. "Help us. They cut off the water. Let them cut off anything they want, even let us starve. But please, not the water. I have two babies." "We died millions of times from fear and anxiety. Those feelings killed us, wishing to be killed as soon as possible. It is better than this pain." I am probably writing to you for the last time. The Western Zionist-controlled media machine would have you believe that this is an unprovoked attack. However, this is the natural response of 75 years of occupation, such that this resistance is a legal right before the Palestinian people according to international law. Alderman Silverstein's resolution is not only wholly inaccurate, it is a lazy regurgitation of the same Western media machine that has been purposely and carefully orchestrated to misrepresent the occupation as a conflict. What Alder Silverstein's resolution makes no mention of is that Israel is the largest, one of the largest military and nuclear powers in the world. Gaza has been defined as an open-air prison that has been subjected to the world's heaviest and largest blockade. It is the most densely populated place in the world with 2 million people, most of which are refugees from surrounding areas. I want you to imagine 15-year-old boy Ahmed. This is not an imagination. He's a cousin of a close family member of mine. Ahmed has experienced 15 sieges on Gaza since he was born. He has been raised in death and destruction. Each of these sieges takes hundreds, if not thousands, of people. He has dreams of making his life better, but he cannot leave Gaza. He has dreams of getting a job, but he cannot leave, and there is no source of occupation in Gaza. He has dreams of going to an education. Israel just yesterday has bombed the only university in all of Gaza. So I am sorry that the people of Gaza did not sit quietly as Israel suffocated them. Alderman Silverstein, in your resolution, you talked about innocent people, but nowhere in your resolution did it mention the 994 Palestinians, including 260 children that have been killed in the past 72 hours. Nowhere does it mention Israel cutting off all electricity, food, water, and leaving the Palestinians in Gaza to starve. We will not sit quietly as this resolution engages in moral and intellectual dishonesty by claiming the victimhood of an apartheid regime. The people of Gaza are being massacred as we speak. I am getting notifications every few minutes of an entire family being wiped out, and yet I sit here asking you to care for Palestinians. I ask the Alderman here to stand for.
Ms. Shahadi, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired.
Free, free Palestine!
Our next speaker is Lakisha Latham.
Good morning. My name is Lakisha Latham. I am the Secretary-Treasurer for the Conrad World Community Reparations Commission, or CWCRC for short. On behalf of the CWCRC, I would like to say thank you and congratulations to Mayor Brandon Johnson and the current city council members on your electoral success. Back in April, we had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Johnson before the election to discuss a 100-day robust reparations plan, which he said he could commit. The plan included, one, an office for the descendants of enslaved Africans, similar to the office of new Americans named to be determined; two, a reparations task force or commission, which we were pleased to see both of these in the 2023 transition report to the mayor; three, a reparative basic income for 2,000 Black youths to receive $800 per month for up to two years, including city jobs, contracts, et cetera, to further help bridge the wealth gap; and four, an enforceable slavery-era disclosure and redress ordinance. We have been working with city council members since 2019 for the advancement of reparations for the descendants of enslaved Africans. The former mayor turned her back on reparations even though city council members successfully voted for a commission 47 to 2. Both the reparations, basic income, and slavery-era disclosure topics were both discussed last year during the June 9 council meeting. The reparative basic income ordinance was prepared by former Alderman Roderick Sawyer and to be introduced to the city council by Alderman Stephanie Coleman. With budget hearings taking place and the budget for Chicago's 2024 year now being decided, it is understood that nearly 300 million plus is planned to be allocated for the undocumented immigrants. On May 24, 2023, the city council meeting was very unsettling, to say the least. Black community members, activists, and citizens were outraged that the city would approve an additional 51 million for immigrants. CWCRC has held town hall meetings to discuss the support of the items and surveys to include reparations in the budget at ChicagoReparations.org. We can all agree that slavery was wrong, redlining, deprivation of educational resources in low-income areas was wrong, the lasting effects and traumas to Black people here in Chicago was wrong. In 2019, this great city council member voted for a task force members for a committee or commission for reparations. With the city's push for diversity, equity, and inclusion in one city, a city for all people, we want 300 million in the 2024 budget toward reparations. We are asking each of the council members to take the lead and say yes to reparations in the 2024 budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments, and please remember that speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Our next speaker is Nashwa Bowab.
Hello. I have been a member of the Palestinian community here in Chicago for the past decade. Chicago holds the largest number of Palestinian people living in diaspora in the U.S. In fact, there are more Palestinians in Chicago from certain villages in Palestine than there are in Palestine. This is because of Israel's violent military occupation that has displaced thousands of Palestinians, many of them forced to create new homes here in Chicago. Not only do they make a significant amount of Chicago's voting bloc, but they also contribute immensely to the business and economic sector of this city. There are hundreds of Palestinian-owned businesses in the Chicagoland area, and they are the backbone to so many of our communities here in Chicago. Another important note to highlight is that so many of these Palestinian Chicagoans have many family members back in Palestine, living in the occupied West Bank and Gaza, such as myself. My whole entire family line and generation, generations back, are in Palestine right now, and I am on the constant edge of something happening to them and fearful of something happening to my whole entire family. The Palestinian death toll has reached over 1,000 casualties and even more injuries. Innocent civilians are entrapped under the rubble of their own homes. Some children are the only survivors of their whole entire family. Electricity and other resources that people need to live are quickly becoming exhausted in Gaza due to the inhumane blockade the Israeli government has continued to subject the Gazan people to. In just a few hours, Gaza will lose all power, meaning hospitals will no longer be operable, meaning everyone that is getting currently killed and injured by the Israeli government will have nowhere to go and nowhere and nowhere for medical attention. This is the happening of a modern-day genocide right in front of your eyes. How would you want to stand with Israel as a morally incompetent politician? Moreover, hate crimes on the basis of national origin and religion are rising, all based on the misinformation ignorance perpetuated by Western media that deliberately slander Palestinians, Arabs, and Muslims. This is going to affect and has already begun to affect your Muslim and Arab constituents. Why are high schoolers getting bullied and humiliated from their peers for being Arab and Muslim? Why do I feel compromised leaving my own home wearing the hijab? I implore you to recognize that Palestinians and allies are being subjected to post-9/11 hateful rhetoric, and that should not stand here in one of the most diverse cities in the world. By signing onto Alderman Silverstein's resolution, you are signing in direct opposition to your Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim constituents. You are enforcing the warped narrative that they are perpetuators of violence when Israel has been engaging in the most violent apartheid regime since 1948. Please understand this, and please stand with your Chicago Palestinians. Now is the time for solidarity and support more than ever has been, and trust me when I say, you will be on the unjust side of history if you sign on to Alderman Silverstein's resolution.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Rifka Felaneh.
Hello. Hi again. I'm here to speak about Alder Woman Silverstein's resolution that will be introduced in this meeting today. It is grossly inaccurate and inappropriate and needs to be dismissed. Palestinians have been subject to decades of oppression and brutalization, which is not mentioned in the resolution today. The resolution mentions the rights that Israel has as a sovereign nation, and under international law, Israel also has a duty to provide safety and security to the people that they occupy, and they're not doing that. Let me give you a brief update on Gaza today. Today, the Israeli military has shut off electricity in Gaza, and they're running out of fuel, and the Israeli military dropped a bomb on an ambulance, killing four paramedics. Would the city of Chicago stand by any other state that bombs ambulances and takes out the electricity for 2 million defenseless people? As I stated earlier, I implore the city of Chicago to take a principled stance for Palestinians. I implore you all to look at the historical context and analyze the power structures at play, and I implore the city to look at the objective reality of the situation and that Palestinians have been under siege for far too long, and the Israeli government needs to be held accountable. The complete dehumanization is to expect nothing from people when they are deprived of their freedom and rights. We know that every Palestinian's fate is without resistance, and that is extermination. Alders, you have to make a commitment to progressive and critical change for Palestinians and Israelis. The critical change- Hello. Hi again. I'm here to speak about Alderwoman Silverstein's resolution that will be introduced in this meeting today. It is grossly inaccurate and inappropriate and needs to be dismissed. Palestinians have been subject to decades of oppression and brutalization, which is not mentioned in the resolution today. The resolution mentions the rights that Israel has as a sovereign nation, and under international law, Israel also has a duty to provide safety and security to the people that they occupy, and they're not doing that. Let me give you a brief update on Gaza today. Today, the Israeli military has shut off electricity in Gaza, and they're running out of fuel. And the Israeli military dropped a bomb on an ambulance, killing four paramedics. Would the city of Chicago stand by any other state that bombs ambulances and takes out the electricity for 2 million defenseless people? As I stated earlier, I implore the city of Chicago to take a principled stance for Palestinians. I implore you all to look at the historical context and analyze the power structures at play. And I implore the city to look at the objective reality of the situation, and that Palestinians have been under siege for far too long, and the Israeli government needs to be held accountable. The complete dehumanization to expect nothing from people when they are deprived of their freedom and rights. We know that every Palestinian's fate is without resistance, and that is extermination. Alders, you have to make a commitment to progressive and critical change for Palestinians and Israelis. The critical change can begin once you scrap Silverstein's resolution and vote on a resolution that accurately discusses the situation in Palestine. The resolution as it stands incites harm against Palestinians and our allies. Please vote against this resolution and instead draft and vote on a resolution that is accurate and just. Today, we will be paying attention to your votes. I don't know if you're voting today, but if you are, we'll be paying attention in general. And yeah, we're watching, and we can no longer stand by and allow these cycles of violence to continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Buthaina Hatab.
Let's go, Buthaina! Woo! 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 Woo!
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Following the loss of American lives in the attacks on Tel Aviv, President Biden swiftly condemned these actions as pure, unadulterated evil. He emphasized that there is no higher priority than the safety of Americans being held hostage around the world. It deeply troubles me to see the ongoing hypocrisy among so-called world leaders as they consistently prioritize the lives of non-Palestinians, even when the Palestinians affected are American citizens. The heartbreaking case of Palestinian journalist Shereen Abu-Aqla exemplifies this double standard. Shereen, who was on duty and courageously reporting on yet another Israeli raid in Jenin refugee camp, was unfairly targeted and killed by Israeli forces. While I and many other Palestinians found ourselves utterly devastated mourning the death of Shereen Abu-Aqla, the rest of the world turned a blind eye. Shereen's murder serves as a grim reminder of the relentless Israeli efforts to silence the Palestinian narrative and perpetuate the ethnic cleansing of Palestinians. However, her death received no acknowledgement and no proper investigation, not from Israeli forces and not from our own American leaders. One crucial note to highlight is Shereen was an American citizen. Furthermore, this past June, a group of Israeli settlers launched a terrorist attack on the village of Turmasayya, my family's home village. The attackers were armed with assault rifles and wreaked havoc in the village, setting homes and cars ablaze and firing ammunition at innocent Palestinians. The home of my cousins was one of the homes targeted in this attack. Their grandmother was trapped inside their house, and fortunately, she was okay. But the ruthlessness of this attack did claim the life of an honorary hero. Umar al-Qutain, a 27-year-old Palestinian, was tragically shot and killed by Israeli forces. There has been no reprimand and no accountability for the group of settlers that terrorized Turmasayya, despite the fact that they conducted a full-blown terrorist attack on innocent American civilians. Furthermore, it's essential to note that Umar, my cousins, their grandmother, and even our own state representative, Abdal Nasr Rashid, were subject to these attacks on Turmasayya, and all of them hold American citizenship. The Biden administration fails to acknowledge the loss and suffering of Palestinian life under the brutal Israeli occupation. Where was the concern for American life in these instances? Is the loss of life only deemed reprimandable in regard to white, non-Palestinian lives? This discrepancy is a painful illustration of the bias that persists, and the dilution of Palestinian lives must cease. I urge all of you to block Alder Silverstein's disgraceful misrepresentation of a resolution. By signing your name onto it, you are further solidifying complacency with the racist and colonial institutions. End aid to Israel, free Palestine, and end settler colonialism.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Lena Issa.
Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. This completes our public speaking portion of the meeting. Yes, the chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
To be represented for quorum.
Oh, sure. We will reflect that Alderman Rodriguez is here for quorum. We do not have any resolutions at this time. Next up, communications.
Reports and communications from the city officers. Proposed documents refer to the committee. I.C. Clerk Valencia transmitted here with various claims filed against the city of Chicago, which refer to the Committee on Finance. Your Honor, that concludes reports and communications from mayors and other city officers.
Thank you very much. Committee reports. Chair recognizes. Your committee reports. Chair recognizes rules. Chairperson, Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Committees and Rules, which met on Wednesday, October 11, 2023, at 11:30 a.m., the committee recommends the following re-referrals. The committee recommends that Items 1 through 7 be re-referred to the Committee on Finance. The committee, and I move approval by these recommendations by a roll call.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Mr. President, me and Alderman Lopez moved to defer and publish the entire Rules Committee report.
Alderman Lopez, are you joining Alderman Beal? Okay, thank you. That's confirmed. Thank you, Madam Chair. Matters on the agreed-upon calendar. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I have several items that are referred to the agreed-upon calendar from the Clerk in Valencia, totaling six items proposed for the agreed calendar, consisting of contributory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following Alderpersons: Alderperson Lee, Alderperson Lopez, and Alderperson Mosley. I move these into omnibus.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to let everyone know on your desk are the schedules for budget hearings, as well as the rules and everything, what we'll be doing, and also our lunch conversation. So everyone's been given an assigned date. The person at front will be the lead of that. We ask that you work with the staffs and everyone to get that done, and that we have some productive budget hearings. So again, we'll start 10 o'clock every morning, and we'll meet at the call of the chair. So just wanted to make sure everyone had that. Books will be provided on Friday for everyone's physical books, but the electronic books are available at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman. Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Mr. President, I have a question for the chairman of budget. Through the chair.
Questions be raised. Mr. Alderman Beal.
You know, I've been here for a few years now, and I was just wondering, so we're not getting budget books? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, so you are getting budget books.
But we're not getting them today?
No, you're not getting them today. The budget is available. The budget is available online for you. The budget books are not ready as of yet. I don't control the budget books. When I get them, you get them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Alderman Beal. For new business, the clerk will call the wards, beginning with the 50th ward.
Alderman Villegas has proposed a resolution to call for hearings on the Police Department's troubled buildings units referrals to the Department of Buildings, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Public Safety and the members of the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Telfiero has proposed orders for a substitute to previously introduced amendment of the municipal code chapters 17-12 and 17-17 by modifying various sections regarding city digital signs and general terms, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Moore has proposed a resolution to call for hearings with the president of Lakeshore Recycling Systems on waste diversion rates and possible avenues for improvement, which is referred to Committee on Environment. Alderman Harris has proposed orders for transfer of funds within the Committee on Committees and Rules for the year 2023, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all the medic introductions.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
We do have. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. After discussions with you and council, there was a technical issue with introducing my resolution for solidarity of Israel. So we will be reconvening on Friday, October 13, at 1:40 p.m. for a special City Council meeting to discuss it further.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman Silverstein. For date and time. The date and time for the next meeting. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Being ordained by the City Council of Chicago, Section 1, the next regular meeting of the City Council of Chicago shall be held on Monday, October 16, 2023, beginning at 9:45 a.m. in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North Listowel Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section 2, the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, 7th Ward.
Free, free Palestine! Free, free Palestine! Free, free Palestine! Free, free Palestine! Justice is just a fight! Justice is just a fight! The people are up fighting! The people are-
Thank you very much.
Justice is just a fight! The people are- Fight! 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 Fight!
Restore order.
Free, free Palestine! Free, free Palestine! Free, free Palestine! Don't just be afraid! It's real, it's real, it's fire! Do your best! Do your best! Do your best!
Thank you, Sergeant-at-Arms, for restoring order. Chair recognizes. Can I get a voice vote for the, a motion for a voice vote for the passage of the date and time? A motion?
I move that, Mr. President, I move passes in the omnibus.
No, 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 voice vote. He asked for a vote.
Oh, you asked for a voice vote.
Yes, I need a motion for a voice vote.
Move for a vote.
There's been a motion for a voice vote to approve the date and time of the next City Council meeting. All those in favor of the date and time that has been established by the clerk for the next City Council meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise on a point of order. We'll submit a motion at this time that on Friday at the hour of 1:40 during the special meeting, that public testimony for that meeting be limited to virtual only, and that the gallery be closed for the duration of the meeting. And I ask for a roll call vote on my motion. Thank you.
I do not believe that your motion is in order. We have rules, the Open Meetings Act that we have to abide by. So I do not see your motion in order. Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Committees and Rules and the associated unsuch motion to reconsider.
In that motion, Alderman Mitchell, there was no roll call for the omnibus. So that motion is not necessary. But the chair does recognize Alderman Spazato.
Mr. President, it's a point of information. It's really an opinion, an opinion point. I cite with my colleague here, Alderman Hopkins. I believe his reasoning is safety of some people in this council. So I would ask you to reconsider your decision on this, that we do it virtual. We're still letting people speak. We're just asking they speak virtual.
Thank you very much, Alderman Spazato. Again, for the, stay with me. We're speaking here. We're good. Thank you for that. I do recognize that there has been an incredible amount of robust debate, of which I've been on the other side of that at times. However, the Open Meetings Act provides the public the opportunity to speak. I'm confident that our sergeant-at-arms, as well as our entire security team, will make sure that we keep decorum and that in the event that things move in a direction that is potentially threatening or unsafe, I will direct the sergeant-at-arms to restore order. Thank you very much. The chair rec- Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, since there's no omnibus, can we pass, I move that we pass the agreed calendar by a voice vote.
There's a motion for a voice vote for the agreed-upon calendar. I'm hearing no objections. All those in favor, the agreed-upon calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.